The January 2019 meeting of the Riverside Township Board of Trustees. To order, please rise. And Clerk Blau, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Maybe seated. And Clerk Blau, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Present.
Trustee Drapka?
President.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Present.
Supervisor Wilt?
Here.
I'll let the record note that Clerk Blau is in attendance and that Trustee Lopfert is not in attendance.
I believe he will be a few minutes late, as is often the case. All right, we've called the roll. We have before us the minutes of the December 11th, 2018 meeting. What is your pleasure?
I make the motion to approve the next December 11th meeting.
I have a motion by Trustee Clark to approve the minutes of December 11th. Do I hear a second? Thank you, Trustee Drapka. We have a motion and a second to accept the minutes of the December 11th, 2018 Board of Trustees meeting. Any additions or corrections to be noted?
I didn't see any.
All right, then, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
I will abstain, I was not part of this debate.
And I also vote aye, so we have three ayes. One abstention, thank you very much. Do we have any communications?
None.
Look at that.
Nobody likes this this morning.
No, we will note that there are some Christmas cards that are hanging in the office that came for the board. You can look those over, but there was no actionable items then. I don't see any visitors, so I presume we have no visitors' remarks. Under the supervisor's report. All right, so I would like to announce to this board, you do not have to act upon it, however, I am changing the flat grant, which is given to general assistance clients on a monthly basis. It is within the supervisor's power after having done this for 18 months or so, and also after a notification that some of the numbers, some of the standards by which this is measured, the minimum that a township should be paying has risen, but I'm going above that amount to $400 a month. $400 a month is still minimal, but it does help people that are job hunting to make ends meet. So, as of the first working day of the year, as of January 2nd, I have changed the general assistance flat grant to $400 per month. There's no change at this time to the emergency assistance. I already increased that when I saw what is needed to make people whole and get them out of the dangerous situations. So that is, that's just to be made part of the record that that has been increased. I would like to note that there are a few anniversaries that will be coming up in the next couple of years, depending on how we want to measure them. In the later part of the meeting, there is something about participating in Cook County Township Officials Township Day, and I just want to plant a seed that in 2020, in 2020, this township will be celebrating its sesquicentennial. We were founded in 1870, and this building, in 1894, the township board authorized the supervisor to contract for a building. The building was technically dedicated in November of 1894, but to the best of my knowledge, that simply meant that the cornerstone was laid, because even at that, the building, there was a celebration in 1895, so these numbers would bring us to roughly the 125th anniversary of this building. But in August of 1895, there was a celebration in the community over the new town hall, but it didn't start being used for business until a few months later, and I don't know when exactly that was. I need to go into the actual minutes to identify that, but this is just from some summaries of the history. So, I want you to keep in mind that we're going to be looking at 125th anniversary of the building and a sesquicentennial of the township within the next two years, so we should be thinking about what we want to do about that. I would like to share that the exercise classes, even though December, there were no classes between Christmas, actually from Christmas Eve until New Year's, they're back now, and they're back to about 12 people per class, so that is doing well. I did meet with, I actually had a private webinar with Paychex to review their process for initiating an employee manual, so I went through that, but that was like right before New Year's, so I haven't started working on developing that, but that will be something that I'll be working on in the next few weeks. I plan to attend a Township Officials of Illinois seminar on January 25th, which deals with the budgeting preparation and, you know, things to watch out for. We've gone through the budget process once before, but I'd like to see what kind of best practices might be out there. There are going to be some kind of building repairs, but I'm not quite sure what they are yet, because just a couple of days ago, I was approached by the village's public works director, who called to my attention that there is some water damage on the police wall, but by its location, it comes from our wall. It's either some kind of a compromise in a downspout, or it's tuck pointing, or a combination thereof, right at the wall where we meet. So, if anybody has, I have some people that we've worked with before on these things that I'll reach out to for some estimates, but I will also accept if any of you have any recommendations, so that I can reach out and get that fixed. It's obviously not something that just happened. There's, I was given some pictures of the damage, and then some pictures of where they suspect the problem may lie. As far as the holiday meals, the Christmas ones, once again, were not as popular or as heavily taken as Thanksgiving ones, so we bought, I believe, it was 35 or 36 hams, which is less than the turkeys we tend to buy. We only distributed 21 hams, but we also had some leftover turkeys, and some people, we gave them the option if they preferred, so some people took a turkey. And the remaining hams were distributed, we gave a couple to the firehouses, so that firefighters could enjoy those. I distributed a few through Carol Spale to some other families that might not have come forth, don't normally use the food pantry. And then the, we used one for a staff lunch. We had to throw one away because it was only refrigerated, and it must have been compromised, was swelling up.
Are these canned hams you gave?
No, these are bone, these were smoked hams, shrink wrapped, and they came refrigerated, but we wound up freezing most of them, because that was a little easier for us to handle. And then we still have a few, but a group that does one of the shelters has agreed to take those for one of their upcoming meals, so they will be utilized. And, so, yeah, that will be fed to the folks at Housing Forward and people who are in the general area. And I think that's it, unless you have any questions, other things that are going on. By the way, the sound panels, that was on hold for a while because of needing to do painting and all that in here, and it's almost impossible to get a time when this room isn't being used every other day. So, it has not been painted yet, but I checked, and the panels are such so we could remove them to do the painting at a later date, so I'm going to go find the fabric this week and get that back on track as well. The other thing, and I think I might have mentioned it before, but I'm also going to be looking into the sound we know is even worse in the auditorium, and probably the quickest fix without compromising the aesthetic of the place would be to go with some drapes in the windows, to hang some fabric in there, so I'm going to look into that and see what that might run us. And that's it. Are there any trustees' reports?
I have a question.
Yes.
How, you know, last year, we changed the hours and we made them longer. Do you think that's been beneficial?
I think it helps to have at least the one day when we're open till 5:00. You know, it's so hard to tell. We will go some days, and nobody walks through the door, and the phone barely rings all day. And then we'll have another day, and we're like one-armed paper hangers, and people are coming and going. A lot of it is, there's always a change depending on like time of year, time of the month, as to when people come for food pantry, and, but people seem to be happy that they can come in an additional hour here and there. Nobody has complained that we still maintain only till 3:00 on Friday, and, you know, I don't know that we have more traffic. The nurses closet, as I've reported to you recently, has been very busy of late, and I think it helps for those people, because a lot of times, it's a family member who needs to come and get it, and so to have some little later hours, I think, has been good. But I can't say that it's been, that I think that we need to beep open any more hours. It seems like everything gets done, we don't get any complaints, "Oh, you're only open" then, especially, like I said, when they hear that we have one day at least when we're open till 5:00.
Well, yeah, that's what I was wondering, if we needed to revisit this and be open just till three, four days a week, until 5:00, one day a week?
We-
Bless you.
I mean, we'd have to put on the other-
Bless you. Let me do a little bit more monitoring, because, you know, I think that we do get, tend to have people, as in everywhere, that squeak in at the last minute, and we do ask that people who want stuff from food pantry or nurses closet come in at least a half an hour before closing, because, you know, it requires a janitor going downstairs to the nurses closet, and if they don't, well, we also ask that they call in advance for food pantry, so we have food in the office. But, well, let me track it a little bit more and see when the traffic is, and see if it would, if it would be beneficial to shut earlier.
Okay.
All right. Any other thoughts or questions? All right.
I have one thing to report. My son had his 12th birthday here in the auditorium, and it was wildly successful. The sound was horrible, of course, but we knew that. There's a few things, like there's a sewer smell in one of the bathrooms, nothing major. We did have the Wi-Fi issue, the public Wi-Fi has a, needs a password, so maybe get an easier password or the easier Wi-Fi, because nowadays, you know, if they're going to show a movie, it's going to be on the Wi-Fi. If you're going to have a DJ, it's going to be on the Wi-Fi. But I think it's going to be, the more the word gets out, I think that it's going to be much more heavily utilized. All the parents thought it was a great idea, all the kids had a blast, so, and that's just one demographic, so I'm excited. I think our new policy is working, and let's just keep monitoring it and getting the word out there.
Great, thank you.
No, I have one more question.
Yes.
It's come to my attention that in the men's bathroom on the second floor, there's no door on one of the stalls, and I was wondering if we could get that replaced.
Okay.
And it wasn't because I was in there, I was just told, just to make that clear.
It's something that about once a year, somebody will comment on. Apparently, one has a door, and I don't go into there much, but I think one stall has a door and one is open.
It does, and I was wondering if we could-
There is one that does have a door, I believe, yeah.
Do we think we could get the door on the second one?
We'll check into it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anything else? Any other reports by trustees?
Tomorrow, we're going to have our first senior drop-in after exercise class, so we'll see how that goes. And then, I will be getting, for our first event in 2019, I'll be getting the band switchback for sometime in March.
Great.
I do have one question about, we had talked about direct mailing, maybe highlighting some of the township events. Any further research on that? Do you want me to?
Well, so, we discussed a senior mailing, and in your packet, there is a sample for that, and we did, we're going to have a demographically targeted group, so that will be our first experiment with that. I figure, go to the group first, that probably doesn't do electronic communication the same way. And so, when we get to that point, I'll accept comments about that mailing, and, you know, including content and the aesthetic of it. Anything else?
Generally, around this time of the year, we have some type of speakers event, but I am fresh out of ideas for speakers events, so if we want to do something, you know, we would need suggestions, I would need suggestions or-
Great.
My only thought is, with our new policy, is maybe getting some type of musical group to come in, and, you know, just like, you know, maybe from 4:00 to 5:00 on a Saturday afternoon, or 3:00 to 4:00, and just, and then people could bring in their own alcohol.
Great.
That would, that's the only thing I could really come up with, I couldn't come up, I haven't had any topical issues hit me in the face, the way they normally do.
Well, maybe everybody can put on their thinking glasses.
Or we can take a year off, but you know what I'm-
Okay.
Yeah.
We can look into what, I know that there was something that just struck me recently, and now, now it's totally out of my head.
Yeah.
I probably have a note on it somewhere on my desk, because there was some topic, I thought, oh, maybe we should, we should deal with that, but what that was right now, I couldn't tell you. But if anybody else has any thoughts on what kind of a speaker or some kind of an event to do for the general public, not just for seniors?
Yeah.
Right. Okay. And Trustee Drapka, did you have anything?
No.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Okay, the Mental Health Board, we have a, next meeting is next Wednesday. I do have to report that both CSAR and WSSRA, our special recreations, have agreed finally to our agreement that we have in place. I have forwarded on to Supervisor Wilt, who forwarded it on to our attorneys, that will be going strong. For the people, for WSSRA, what we're going to do is, is they will be reimbursed for the time from October, November, and December. So, we are on our way, we're very close, being that this is the first or only one in the state that is doing it, they wanted to make sure that everything was on board. It's a very standard agreement, it's fine. So, I'm real happy about that, I'm excited about that, and our next meeting is, like I said, next Wednesday.
I think in our last meeting, Tim, we had invitations to a dinner afterwards, is that still on?
That's the appreciation dinner, and that's already been taken care of. We will, I mean, you want to attend?
Well, I was thinking about it.
Let me know, let me know by tomorrow.
I probably didn't respond either, I didn't plan to be there.
I can add two more, there's no problem.
Anyone else plan to attend that?
What is the date again? I have it in my schedule.
It's next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, the 16th, in Chuchu.
Right on, what time?
7:00 PM.
Yeah, I'd love to go, I'll stop in afterwards for a drink.
Cash bar.
Yeah.
Very good.
And that's the end of my report, yeah.
Thank you very much. Welcome back, it's good to see you.
Glad to be back.
Yes. All right, on to new business. In terms of discussion of a policy, of a budget, I just thought that we might want to start looking at some dates for some preliminary discussions. Last year at this time, we scheduled a meeting for late in January for preliminary discussion and kinds of topics, kinds of long-range planning that we need to consider in setting a budget. Did you want to set something for that fifth week of the month? We have like a fifth Tuesday, fifth Wednesday, and a fifth Thursday, 29th, 30th, and 31st, if you'd like to. I can only go for the fifth week, because we probably don't have other things scheduled, although groups tend to jump on those as well.
Well, you also have that, you're going to that thing on the 25th.
Right, right, I'll be down, it's a one-day thing, I'll be back right away, so.
Well, 28th, 29th, 30th, 31th?
I'm free, I mean, free any of those days.
My trade association that I'm president of has its big trade show that week.
Oh, okay.
So, I'd be Monday or Friday.
You would be-
Available Monday or Friday.
Available Monday or Friday, so Monday, the 28th?
Sounds good, sounds good with me.
Or Friday, the first of-
I'm free the 28th.
Shall we schedule Monday, 20th?
Tim?
It's the fourth Monday, so.
As far as I can tell, I'll just make myself available.
Okay.
And? And, time, 7:00 o'clock, or earlier, or?
7:00.
Don't we usually meet at 6:00?
Yeah, don't we do that? Why don't we do that?
Okay, and I'll get some pizza and salad or something, okay.
All right.
6:00 o'clock, we said?
6:00.
Okay.
Hopefully, in this room, if not here, I'll let you know where. I haven't looked at whether it's available.
If it's not available, could we maybe meet upstairs? Because I find that room over there too small.
Oh, that's too small, right.
Yeah.
We could probably go into 22, if this is occupied. We'll check that out.
That works.
Very good. We'll schedule that, 6:00. And, next order of business, you have a request for a budgetary transfer. Copy of the budget, so you can refer to it. Also, you have a copy of the budget, so that you can consider the things that you want to see differently for next year, so that's why you have that. But we have a request, and it would be for the transfer of $300 within the assessors' office budget from the automobile expense, account number 2805, $300 to be transferred to the postage and printing column of account 2715, $300 there. And then that would change the overall total sum of the automobile expense to $1,500, and the postage and printing to $1,300.
You need a motion on that?
I do.
Absolutely. So, move?
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Trustee Drapka, seconded by Trustee Hollenbach, to make this requested budgetary transfer of appropriations. And Clerk Blau, would you please call the roll on this?
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Lopfert?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
And I will ask you to sign that as well. Next order of business, as I mentioned, you have a sample postcard. Now, I should tell you that the larger postcard that you see here will take more postage. So, the smaller version would be 35 cents to mail, and the larger version would be 50 cents each piece to mail. Where it's just over, with, really, the small one, there's maybe a half inch extra in each direction that is within that postage. I mean, we couldn't, couldn't increase it just a little bit, it's just a hair difference.
How many pieces would be going out?
1,999.
Roughly 2,000.
I'm in favor of the larger one.
Absolutely.
I think especially when we're mailing it to the older adults, that they need to see things bigger, even, I need to see things bigger. So, I'm in favor of the older one. I am in favor of putting a picture of the senior exercise class possibly on the, where, on the address part, somewhere in there, just to spruce it up a little bit.
On the front page?
Yes, so it's just no, just not all text. I'd like to also see our names of the township board on there, just not the, from your Riverside Township Board. And then finally, on the Riverside Township Seniors, the first one, I'd like to see that the march, that we, we need a date from Mary Robb, so we could insert the date for switchback. Well, it says the first Monday, but maybe we-
Right, concern to the actual date, sure, sure.
And we bold that event, because that's the next, immediate next one coming up, so we'd like to, I think we'd like to just bold that in black, but those are just my suggestions.
My suggestion is, the social is on the second Wednesday of the month, not the first Monday.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay. So, social, second, sorry, first, sorry, did you say second Wednesday?
Second Wednesday, yeah.
Second Wednesday, she said.
Oh, second Wednesday, second Monday, now?
Yeah, second Wednesday.
Yeah, when I do these pieces, I always say half as many words, twice as many pictures.
I know, and we try to use as few words as possible.
It's hard, I mean-
You know, we wanted to feature all the things that we have. Is there anything that I'm missing, or any one of these items that we should drop?
I would like to see, you know, we have that service where you can get a temporary handicap.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And I really think that that's important, not only for the seniors, but for everybody, that they can come in here instead of, you know, where do you have to get them, at the DMV?
Sure.
I mean, so, that we can, we can issue that.
Yeah, we'll add that for sure.
I want to add that in there.
More ayes are always helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, and I don't, I think in this case, you know, you don't have to go to the old adage of half as many words, twice as many photos. I mean, it really is what they need to know, so.
A few, just a few minor things, but I agree with Trustee Drapka, the bigger print.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
No, I can't even read it. I truly am blind.
So, what's next, then? I mean, do you, I don't know.
We'll need the actual list.
Yeah.
The mailing list, and then we'll probably utilize the same mailing service, the same printer and mailing service that we use for the newsletter.
Okay, so, we can get this out, then?
We should be able to get it out within 10 days.
So, after it's approved, then, or do you, are you looking, can we approve it now?
You can approve it with these modifications, I'll send you another draft- I'll, I'll send you another draft, so you can see.
Approve it, yeah.
And, um, but I mean, it will have all the changes that you've suggested, the larger version, put a photo of the class, put the names of the board members, add, add the temporary handicap placard, and change the date of the, uh, the seniors' drop-in. You want us to call us a social or a drop-in?
Um, which, what do you think, your community...
Well, the senior drop, it's, you have a senior drop-in that you have to...
For North Riverside, maybe a social, then?
Yeah, so you want...
All right, I have two.
Okay.
I'm, 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 my, my specific question is, though, when it comes to, I mean, do you, are you still, if we approve this now, do you still need to get final approval on the cost in February? Or if we approve this, can you just be done with this, and we can move on, so it goes out?
I'd like it to go out sooner than later, so if, what, if you can give me an approval. I didn't get a quote on the printing, we just went, because we actually, I think we're actually gonna use the mailing service, but not the printing. I think we, we're probably gonna print in-house, or on a very, um, easy office, uh, office supply type of printing, 'cause it can go on a card and all, so...
Um, as, you know, I'd be willing to approve the motion tonight, with the caveat that we get to per freely to...
Absolutely, absolutely.
Do I make that motion?
Yeah, I second that.
Uh, do you wanna put some kind of a limit on it? I mean, not to exceed the cost of a newsletter issue, or something on that order? I mean, I don't have a price quote, that's the only problem with that.
Yeah, not to exceed the cost of the newsletter.
Yeah, I shouldn't exceed the cost of the newsletter.
Yeah, 'cause the newsletter goes out to everybody in the summer.
It's two thousand, that's a thousand bucks in postage, at fifty cents a piece, if there's two thousand, it's a thousand...
So one thousand plus, printing should be minimal, I really think.
So we can do a plus or minus, you know...
Do you wanna do fifteen hundred dollars, plus or minus ten percent?
There you go. So we've got a number out there.
All right, so take that not to exceed, correct?
Not to exceed fifteen hundred with a plus or, plus or minus ten percent. Notice that comes from the accountant?
That's fine, I'll second it.
Okay.
My, my, trustee Drapka already seconded.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion on the postcard, and like I said, I will send you a proof, um, so that you can correct anything that we might still have missed. And clerk Blau, would you please call the roll on that?
Trustee, uh, Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Lutford?
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. All right, and, uh, as I mentioned earlier, we have this notice from the township officials of Brook County, putting us on alert that they have designated June fifteenth, which we believe in the office is a little bit later than usual. We thought, um, staff thought that that usually happened in like March or April, that they're doing it a little later this year.
Township day is usually in September, but I don't know if that's statewide?
Yeah, this seems to be the county thing.
I don't think they've ever done this before.
Oh, all right.
Um, and this, June fifteenth is a Saturday.
Mm-hmm.
Would it, um, that's gotta be right around the time the farmers' market started? Would be better to...
It's going, in Brookfield, and...
Would it be, you know, good for us to do something at the, the farmers' market? I know, Brookfield's farmers' market's on Saturday.
Yes, it is.
Riverside, I think, will still be on Wednesday.
Wednesday, right.
Um, you know, if we're gonna do some... The other thing I thought is maybe we could do, like, a service project, and one would be scatter sunflower seeds to attract twenty bees. Or, um, a couple years ago, when it was the state township days, we did a service project of, um, making, uh, bed mats for homeless veterans. But, you know, I'm in favor of maybe doing some type of service project.
I, I would like to see, I, I, I agree with the service project, that's, that's nice, but I would like to see us provide a service to our township residents, such as maybe a shredding, you know, you've got documents that need to be shredded. Uh, we'll, we'll take care of the cost, you bring them over. Maybe we could set up at, at the back of Hauser, or, you know, somewhere in the, uh...
That's summer, wouldn't it?
Yeah, and, and, they, they can come over for, you know, within the hours of eight AM till eleven AM, and any documents, you can watch them be shredded, we'll have the shred truck here. I, I, I think that's just providing a good service, and then we can incorporate that with our township, uh, day.
That's a wonderful idea.
I think that's a great idea, and, you know, which would be a good place for it, uh, the North Riverside, um, parking, um, the North Riverside.
Yeah.
That's, uh, and then also, a few years ago, we did, um, drop-off bikes, and we had, um, working bikes. They'll, they'll come out for free and collect the bikes. Um, which, if we can do the shredding, that might be something? 'Cause I consider that as a service.
True, sure.
I like the shredding, 'cause it's a direct service. It's something that the township needs, instead of, so the resident would be getting something, rather than giving something. You know, so it'd be both, the service project would be the, the giving part, and then, uh, shredding or something like that would be the getting part.
And on Tim's point, you could do a double, I mean, too. You could have a shredding truck and, uh, have, uh, something for collecting electronical recycling.
Sure.
So you could have both.
Oh, yeah.
So if you don't, you know, I mean, shredding stuff is fine, but also if you're trying to get rid of a TV, or, you know, electronics, you have that there, too. Um, I, although you're absolutely right about the North Riverside, um, having an open space there, I would much prefer to see it in maybe this parking lot over here, because this is our building, and it'd be nice to have it right by us, you know what I mean?
Yeah, if they allow it, I mean...
Right, sure, of course. Yeah, well, that's the same thing, you know, it has permission for the Riverside, too.
Right. We, we can incorporate also, you know, tours of the building, some history of the building.
Sure, exactly.
So those things we could do on the Saturday, you're thinking of?
Right, yeah, um...
Yeah, that'd be brilliant, it'd be best on a Saturday, with the shredding.
Well, the fifteenth is on a Saturday.
Yeah.
But don't we want a place where they can, and if we could get the lot over there, that would be great, 'cause they can pull in one way and pull out the other way.
Mm-hmm.
Do we want a subcommittee on that?
Well, we could, you know, you can look at other places, too, if this is not that. Such as, uh, St. Mary's parking lot? Hauser parking lot, Hauser's here.
And they're not doing anything in the summer.
And in the summertime, they're done, so we can talk to, you know, uh, the parish, St. Mary's Parish, we could talk to Hauser, and, and I'm quite certain that, that they would agree to something like that, especially for a couple, three hours. And you, you can, uh, put in the, you know, food pantry stuff, too.
Do you want, uh, two trustees to kinda spearhead that? Put the ideas on paper, or is that something staff can do?
What about, uh, the village lot down there, next to the pool? You think that's...
That's metro.
Wouldn't that be crowded for pool people?
Yeah.
Pool people park on the other side?
Oh, they do.
That's good.
Well, we...
I'm fine with Hauser.
Yeah.
I could, I could be fine with St. Mary's, too.
I, I, what I think we should do is maybe brainstorm, give, you know, maybe give supervisor Wilt some, uh, some ideas on this, of what we discussed, and then we can, as a group, I think we can make this decision pretty quickly.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, we, we all have pretty good ideas on that.
We'll have, we'll have information for, about it for our next meeting, for sure.
Yeah, perfect.
Could we have preliminary information at our budget meeting, or?
Sure.
And then we could start?
Yeah, we'll be reaching out right away on it.
You don't wanna do that, Tim?
Uh, if we're gonna do a budget meeting, our agenda should say budgetary meeting, and that's it.
And that's it, okay, all right, well, I can...
So we can do it...
Check and email us ideas and stuff, and then we could...
Yeah.
So that you can ruminate on it, yeah, before, before meeting.
Before, yeah, right.
Yeah, our next meeting is, actually, uh, is February twelfth.
And we've got some times there, it's June fifteenth, so... All right, very good.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next item, um, is regarding, uh, township legal counsel. There, there had been questions, uh, previously, whether we should be considering some other, um, some other contracts, and we, um, I think we've had some little disappointment in some of our communications, or, um, like, a positive stance on behalf of the township. So I'm going to revisit, there were some people that I had met with once before that I thought that we could try some business, too. We don't have any kind of a, uh, solid, uh, firm, um, contract with them. We pay as we go, and the same thing would, would hold with the other attorneys that I spoke with, so... If there's no objection, the, um, the attorneys that, um, I would like to revisit the possibilities with are John Fogarty Jr. and Laura Jacksek, who comes from this, uh, this area. They, they have separate firms, but they're both small firms, so they work together on these kinds of government, um...
They, they do township work.
They do, they do municipal work, yes.
Yeah, I, I...
I will also investigate, um, some other possibilities whilst the other townships work with, but, uh...
I have to agree with supervisor Wilt on this. I mean, uh, the urgency, I think is the word that, uh, comes to mind, was just, is just not there. I mean, we, we've had several instances with the mental health board this past year, that we really needed some guidance. Uh, I had to travel out to, uh, the office, which is...
Crystal Lake.
Crystal Lake.
Good hour, right.
You know, for, for a thirty-minute meeting. And, and that, that's just, I'd, I'd like to see somebody a little localized. I'd like to see somebody that takes us, that has the urgency. I know they're busy, I know they're attorneys, but, you know, when you have to keep reminding them to, to act on something, that disappoints me.
Right, right.
So I agree wholeheartedly, I, I, I think it's wa, always worth it to...
So hopefully, by next month, they'll come with a proposal.
And in my opinion, they should, you shouldn't be going out to their offices, they should be here, because they're the ones that are getting paid by us.
Right. Well, I, we had to act so quickly, that was the only option I had, was to go out there. So, I mean, but still, uh, you know, we could've done it by, we could've done it...
Customer service.
Yeah, you know, that's exactly right, so the urgency just isn't there, and, uh, I've discussed it with supervisor Wilt, and, um, I think it's a smart move. I think we should do that.
Right. And if any of you, in your meetings with other township officials, have heard about somebody being really pleased, please let me know, I mean, I'll, um, I'll investigate.
Can you give me that second name, oh, Susan?
No, um, Laura Jacksek.
Oh, Laura?
Would the, uh, the, versus the village attorneys? Or is it, is it...
Absolutely not.
No? But maybe, okay, not necessarily them specifically, but is a township any municipal attorney?
Most of them work both, but I'd like to see someone who has some experience with townships in particular, because...
I'd like to see somebody that specializes in townships.
Right, and that's, that's the only reason I'm not absolutely recommending this. They've had, dealt with some, but I don't know that that's their primary thing. They've, they've done with, dealt with other, um...
Municipalities.
Municipalities, but, uh...
So are you looking for RFPs, or just suggestions at this point?
I would ask for suggestions if you're aware of any, so then I can ask for some RFPs.
Okay.
So, if you have any information, please email it to me, or call me with it, so that I can seek out some more information for next month. All right, uh, anything else on that regard? Then, just for your information, uh, you have a notice of the winter meeting of the talk trustees division. Sounds like a lovely, uh, meeting, and I've already heard from trustee Drapka that he plans to attend. Please notify us as soon as possible, because they want, um, want to have a count soon.
Do you want us to tell you, or is...
If you, if you know, then tell me right now.
I will be attending.
Okay.
I'll have to let you know, girl.
Okay, let us know as soon as possible, so that we can get that in. Very good. And, uh, I've also provided you the only written notice since I've been in office, um, that something was officially happening with the Riverside Lawn Fire Protection District, that it's being dissolved, so I, we did receive this legal notice, so that is for your, uh, detailed information as well. Their funds are being turned over, uh, for the next, uh, and, for the twenty-year agreement to cover that, so... Any questions? Not that I think that I can answer them, but... All right, well, if there's nothing else, we can move on to warrants. And trustee Highlandbach, will you please take those?
Trustee Highlandbach moves that the board authorizes and ratified payment of the bills identified on the general warrant for January two thousand nineteen in the amount of twelve thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars and forty-two cents, as presented to this board on the eighth day of January two thousand and nineteen.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
No, Tom, go ahead.
I'll start it.
What is the, uh, can I have a question? What is the Young Life Refund Event deposit?
Uh, they, that was a group that, uh, we were concerned about, um, that in the past, there had been some damage, or some, uh, routiness, so when they had an event here, we, we held a deposit, and everything was fine, they were well-behaved, and so we returned the deposit. And the, the trouble was that they had given us one big check, part of it was for the rent, and part was for the, a deposit, so we had to cut a separate one. Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Motion by trustee Highlandbach, second by trustee Lutford, to approve the general warrants. Clerk Blau, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach?
Yes.
Trustee Lutford?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Trustee Highlandbach asks that the board ratify and authorize the payments indicated on the following warrants. The utility warrant in the amount of two thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents, payroll warrant of the amount of sixteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twelve cents, the health warrant for the amount of one thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars and thirty-eight cents, the general assistance warrant in the amount of one thousand dollars, township radio players warrant in the amount of two hundred dollars, and the food pantry warrant in the amount of four hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-five cents. All of the above as presented to this board on the eighth day of January two thousand and nineteen.
And do I hear a second? Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the following warrants. Utility warrant in the amount of twenty-two hundred dollars, fifty-seven, twenty-two, fifty-seven, and eighty-nine cents, payroll warrant of sixteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twelve cents, health warrant of one thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars and thirty-eight cents, general assistance warrant of one thousand dollars, township radio players warrant of two hundred dollars, and a food pantry warrant of four hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-five cents. Trustee, uh, I'm sorry, clerk Blau, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach?
Yes.
Trustee Lutford?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much, and, um, where am I now? Oh, I just wanted to comment also that the food pantry did get considerable recent donations, um, the Village of North Riverside, North Riverside Public Library, um, the party from the Lutfers, there were various deliveries... There were, uh, various deliveries of, um, of canned goods and we also received some from Suckle Spirit, from their holiday, um, program. They asked everybody to bring in some. So it's, um, uh, it was very good. I didn't have to buy as much, that's why the warrant is a little lower. And we also were getting some, uh, financial donations, so...
Great.
Yes. Um, did I mention last month that we actually had a couple that double donated? We had received a check for one thousand dollars. The wife came in, left a check, we were thrilled, one thousand dollar check. A couple of days later, then, we opened the mail and there was another check from the same couple signed by the husband. We didn't have a phone number, but we tracked him down, finally reached them and wanted to make sure that they really, that, you know, they knew that they had each done it. And they said, yes, we, we became aware of it, but we're fine with it, please keep both checks.
How wonderful.
So, yes.
Thank you, couple.
Yes.
Very much, yeah.
Yes, yes. So that was, that was very nice. So, uh, the community has been generous and it makes it possible for us to do all that we do. So thank you very much. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn this beautiful meeting.
Have a motion by trustee Drapka, seconded by trustee Clark, to adjourn this meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you.
Good job.